I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please call roll.
Dr. Ramona Becker?
Here.
Guy McDonald?
Here.
Betty Martin?
Here.
Peggy O'Donnell? And Diane Nguyen?
Here.
We have a forum mayor.
Thank you. With all meetings, if we could start with a moment of silent prayer. Amen. Now please rise and join in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everybody to your regularly scheduled meeting. I know we're a week late this month due to some scheduling conflicts of some of the council members and myself last week, so appreciate everybody being here. I do want to let you know that Councilmember Peggy Sue O'Donnell is not able to join us tonight, continues to recover from her procedure, but did want me to thank everybody for the flowers and prayers and well wishes. So Peggy, if you're listening at home, we wish you a speedy recovery and hope to see you back here soon. With that, I want to move into the first item before council this evening, which is the consent agenda. This contains the minutes of the July 5th meeting as well as a special meeting that was held on July 11th. That special meeting was only, the only time we did at that meeting was an executive's session, so there is no other business that was discussed. And then we went into our regularly scheduled workshop. So that is before council this evening.
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, passes. Next is appropriations ordinance 16-14 in the amount of $244,838.49. One of them showed that 20,000 of this actually went for police capital expenses. The remaining were for daily operational costs, salaries, benefits, et cetera appropriations ordinance. Again, I want to remind everybody at home and in the audience that if anybody wants to see that at any time, it's listed on our website. You can see where every penny is spent. But if there's no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move again to approve appropriations ordinance 16-14.
Second.
We have first and second. Are there questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. City requested appearances. I have one in front of me, and that is for Lyle Ackerman. If you could come to the podium and state your name and address and ask you a few comments and sorry for three minutes. Welcome.
Welcome. Glad to be here, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, and staff. I'm here for just a couple of items this evening. One is to thank you all for opening up the, I don't know, I call it the limb patch on Saturday mornings, and also for cleanup here a couple of weeks ago. It obviously was well attended, and I'm sure you all can attest to that by the number of drop-offs. One caveat there, it might be a little petty, but a couple of weeks ago when you were going to have the drop-off, I had a funeral to go to that morning, and I was a little bit in a hurry, so I was the second person up there. I came in from the east, which I do every time, and again, being a little bit impatient, but there were five individuals looking at me across the cable, and it was quarter till, and we stood and looked at each other for 15 minutes. And, you know, me, I don't mind getting out and saying, hey, what's the deal here? And they said, oh, we were told we will not open this place up till 9:00 a.m. And they did not. Maybe they were afraid they were going to lose their job. Enough said about that. The other item is, I've been an advocate for a long time for infrastructure issues around the city of Bel Air, and I guess I went to sleep for a number of years, but I guess I've woken up again when I drive over some of the bumpy streets and see some other areas. And my last one is drainage ways and ditches, and I'm sure you've all seen a couple of my emails here lately. The city does a wonderful job, better than they've done in many, many years, of keeping up the roadways and the ditches and the waterways, and I was going to say streets too, but maybe I'll back up on that one just a little bit. And I got a nice report, and I failed to notice it, that Ty, no doubt, had his staff put together regarding the drainage over on North Fork. And I agreed with just about everything he said, except I don't think that from the north area of the Woodlawn Drainage System is being maintained to the point that it needs to be to get that water out and under the railroad tracks there. And in a 500-year flood, if that's what we had here a few weeks ago, it handled that water just fine, and it will handle it again, but not if those culverts get obstructed or flooded, or not flooded, but obstructed or blocked with debris, fallen trees, limbs, of which there are beginning to have some accumulate in that drainage ditch. Previous administrations have, going back to Mayor Smith, Mayor O'Neill, and their administrations have cleaned that ditch out periodically. And so precedent's already been set to do that. And so I don't know why, I'm not asking for the thing to be mowed with a mower after you get through, but I think at least if the debris and the fallen trees, et cetera, could be cleaned out of there, so that's not a risk of plugging or obstructing those culverts, I'm plenty good with that. I'm sure my time's up. Anyway, thanks for your consideration in that regard.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Ackerman. Next move into reports. As far as my report, I have nothing formal to report, but do want to just let everybody know, coming up on August 15th, make sure you mark your calendars for that, and it's Lucky's favorite day, it's Hot Dogs Pool Party. And I know Tristan and staff have worked very hard on getting that together, as has the Community Development Advisory Committee, to put that together. Again, August 15th, the Hot Dogs Pool Party, over here at the Central Park Pool. So I look forward to that. Of course, we'll have a couple of meetings before then, but do want to let people know to get that on the calendar. And speaking of the Community Development Advisory Committee, that is a committee that puts together events here, and with the explicit purpose of promoting our city and working, you know, it used to be the economic development, economic advisory, it's kind of grown into this group that promotes the city and everything that we have to offer, and it's a really neat committee. I've been a part of it for many, many, many years, but we do have a couple of openings on that. So if you, anybody home in the audience, or know of anyone who might be interested in serving on that, if you would, please send me an email here at the City Hall. We certainly probably have that on our website. You can find all that contact information, but I'd like to let you know about that. We have several committees here inside City Hall that meet. These are volunteer committees, our Planning Commission, our Utility Advisory Committee, our Tree Board. These are all volunteer committees, and just want to let you guys know how much I appreciate everything that you guys do for the city. So that's the end of my report. Go ahead and start with Councilmember Report. Start with Councilmember Martin.
Oh, I attended the Planning Commission meeting, which was very interesting, and also the Board of Directors for REAP. And instead of taking up everybody's time of telling you what all went on, I just made copies, and if you'd pass those on. I already gave Ty and Jamie one, so that's the end of my report.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Really have very little to report, but I might mention, and I just got this late this afternoon, Tristan and Jenny are putting out a newsletter. It is excellent. I got it just this afternoon, about four o'clock. So if you don't, it came email for me. Are you mailing them, or?
No, it's just an email to save on costs, and so, but...
Sure. If they have an email, get your email up here. It was excellent. And that's a bellyache that I have heard almost from the day I moved into Bel Air in 1970-something.
Okay.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. First thing I want to say is that I really enjoyed the tweeting tour on Wednesday, July the 20th, when it was 100 degrees outside, and our Public Works Department, and I imagine it was Tristan, I don't know who else, was going around the city, working and taking care of business in that horrible hot, hot heat, and reporting via Twitter. And this is really cool, the way, this is, I think, is this the second time they've done something like this? If you have Twitter, or if you don't, sign up for it, because it's very informative, and I thoroughly enjoyed it, even though it was so hot, it almost made me hot at home just to think of them being out there in the heat. So that was really good, and I hope they continue to do that. That was just excellent. And it gives you an appreciation for what our city employees do. And sometimes you might not have any idea what they do, and they just report throughout the day of all the various places they're going and things they're doing, so it's really The second thing I want to talk about is, you know, we're always so glad to have people come and speak to us. That is something we wish would happen every single meeting, because we want people to share their thoughts with us, and even if it's about something we need to take care of, like last meeting, we heard about some flooding issues that we really needed to get out and take care of, and I think we've already addressed that. Even if it isn't maybe the most fun or the best news we've ever heard, we still like to hear it, because that's what we're here for, to hear from citizens. And furthermore, I want to say that my parents were great believers in education, and they always said to us that we have a right to our opinion. We'd have a lot of debates in the family. We like to debate each other about all kinds of issues. And my dad always says, you have a right to your opinion because we live in America, and we have the freedom to express our opinion. And that's a precious, wonderful freedom that we have here. And like I say, we always want to hear people's opinions. If maybe they're negative sometimes, or we don't agree with them, we still want to hear them. But my dad was also very adamant in saying, we have a right to our opinion, but we do not have a right to make up facts. And that's what I tell my students too, when my students are doing discussions. They can state any opinion they want, they have a right to their opinion, but they have to state it as an opinion, not as a fact. So when I was looking through the minutes, I did want to say a few words about a couple of things I noticed in there. And I kind of noticed this at our last meeting, and I made a couple of little statements about it, and I think I said at that time, we can't bear false witness, nor should we use incendiary language. And that is misspelled in our minutes. And I may have said it wrong, so it was hard to understand, but it should be spelled I-N-C-E-N-D-I-A-R-Y. And that's language which is kind of like setting things on fire, or maybe even an explosion by definition, you know? So we have to be careful about our words, because sometimes our words can be a little bit much. And so there were a couple of things that were said. By the way, that's on the bottom of page eight, if you want to correct that, Jenny. No one on the council has ever said, that I know of, has ever stated that Jim Dunning is responsible for this sewer issue that we've been discussing last few weeks. As far as I know, nobody on the council has ever said that, so I just wanted to make that clear, because we don't want anybody that might read those minutes to think that somebody on the council said that, because as far as I know, nobody has. I also wanted to say that there has been zero attempt at covering up this issue. I don't know of any way the staff, or any of the employees, or any of the council members have tried to cover this up in any way. After all, it was the transparency of a council member that brought this to light, or nobody would even know anything about it to this day. So I think the city, and the staff, and the council, and the mayor have been perfectly transparent. No cover-up whatsoever, just for clarification. Now, somebody may have that opinion, but there's a difference between opinion and fact. And then, lastly, I don't think that, as far as I know, anybody on our staff, nor the mayor, nor the council, has ever, ever blamed those who were overcharged. Why would we do that? I don't think we ever had. And that's what it reads in the minutes, and so that's just a clarification. That could very well be somebody's opinion. Everybody has a right to their opinion, but as far as I know, that is not a fact. And so I just wanted to say those things after I read the minutes, and just remind everybody, we have to be very careful. We all have a right to our opinion, just like my dad always says, you have a right to your opinion in this country! And we do. But we have to make sure we state things as opinion when that's what they are. So thank you.
Thank you. And just want to remind everybody at home, for, you know, when you hear, you just heard about the words, what we said, or may not have said, one thing's really neat. Every single one of our meetings, you guys can go back and watch the YouTube and hear exactly verbatim what was said. And those are online, those are archived. Our YouTube numbers are skyrocketing these past three months. So everybody out there, get informed, and you can hear exactly what was said up here by any of us at any time. With that, let's go ahead and move to continuing with reports to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items. I wanted to follow up on Mr. Ackerman. He had mentioned the cleanup day, community cleanup day that we had a couple of weeks ago, and they counted 292 people attended that, but 90% was people dropping off brush. So some people did bring some old things that they didn't want anymore, and they had the trash trucks there to haul it off, but most of it was brush. And I think because of all the wind, like Mr. Ackerman said, we've had a lot of brush issues this year. But that was well-attended, and like I said, the new contract with Waste Connections, we'll probably schedule another one this fall, but it'll actually be curbside pickup. And once we get that scheduled, we'll let all the citizens know, so they don't have to worry about actually taking their trash. Now, the brush will still have to go to the brush site, but the actual, you know, sofas and, you know, old junk like that, they'll actually pick up on this.
And when did you say that will be?
We don't have it set yet.
Oh, okay.
And so as soon as we get that set, we're thinking probably October, late October, or something like that.
Okay, great. I just had somebody send me an email about that, wondering about that today.
Yep, yep. So we're going to get that worked out with Waste Connections, and we'll get it out so everybody knows that, what day and time that'll be, and then they can just take it to the indoor driveway for that. And then the last thing is pretty exciting. We received a 2016 KDHE grant, recycling grant, in the amount of $24,000. And what we're using those funds for is to put in, I think it's called the Pour-in-Place Surface for the park up here in Central Park. So if anybody's been to the Bel Air Park and did the playground there, they know that spongy surface is what's called a pour-in-place, and it's for the safety of little kids if they fall off, they can kind of bounce a little bit on that, and it's not in the sand or dirt or whatever. So we were fortunate to get that grant, and that will cover doing the pour-in-place for the park here in Central Park. So as soon as we get that grant money in, you'll be seeing, we'll be getting costs for that, bringing that for your approval. So, and that was all ahead, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Let's move into ordinances, resolutions, and final actions. The first thing, big thing here, is city staff and council, we have prepared a preliminary budget. City staff really put this together for 2017, and went over that. It was presented at our May workshop. We were kind of ahead of the schedule on that. Anytime we do anything ahead of time, I like to do that, so we can have as much input as possible. The council continued quite a bit of discussion on that. We made some changes at our workshops in both June and July. I'm happy to say that our proposed budget for 2017, once again, contains a zero-mill levy increase for property owners. You know, reading papers around the area, you can't say that for too many, for a lot of cities around here, and I'm very proud that, once again, we have maintained that. Due to additional principal, and we've also made principal payments, additional principal payments on land, so that the debt on the land is decreasing the principal on that. And so because of that, we're able to put more money towards streets, which is something we have heard about, I've heard about. I would imagine most of you have too, that street repairs are needed and wanted. I'm happy to report this budget contains an increase in street budget, street repairs. So, again, a thumbs up from the back row back there, I like that, okay. Tonight, the action here is simply to approve the proposed budget for publication. This goes along with state statute, so it'll be in our official paper of record, which is the Ark Valley News. We'll have a public hearing for citizens' input August 9th, so if there's any citizens that want to come and have input on the budget, they may do so. Our new director of Finance Administration, Ted Henry, and a new father, and he's awake, so I'm glad you're here. But he's here to go over this proposed budget, you know, for our citizens that are here in the audience and that are also watching at home, so we'll have it up there on the screen. Just to let everybody know, once it's published, the budget can be changed. We cannot increase it, but we can make a few changes if need be. Again, it's just for publication, and Ted, go ahead and start speaking about it.
Mayor Austin, councilmembers, like you said, I'm here to present little highlights of our 2017 budget. Budget is a planning document, as you know, and good planning documents have goals. These five goals come out of decisions we had in workshops, and I'll address each of them one by one. Our first goal, like Mayor said, was no city level, city mill levy increase. As you can see, we've planned and adopted a flat city mill levy for the past two budget cycles, and the 2017 budget will be no different. City mill levy rates are set at 45.73. This is also a graph that Michelle did last year on total mill levy amounts in cities around us, and we've maintained our spot, third to last, lowest anyway. And it's pretty interesting to see, once I've changed it, you can see other cities moving directions, and we just stay pretty constant. So that was pretty neat when I updated her chart from last year. Our second goal was to look for new ways, or look for ways to keep costs down and reorganize to efficiently deliver services. In 2017, we will save about $65,000 in unemployment insurance premiums. I believe this is credited to hiring the right people and low turnover. The 2017 budget provides funding to hire a code enforcement officer and a street maintenance worker. And I'm glad Councilmember Becker talked about Tristan's social media campaign, because she also went around with Keith Price, our building inspector, and that's who the code enforcement's going to help. And I just looked online and saw at 10:30 in the morning that day, the building inspector went to three inspections and one complaint, and the post ended with, and we only have seven more stops to go today. So helping him would sure be a welcoming sight. Goal number three is to ensure all annual debt service payments are budgeted and paid for the correct, from the correct funds. To help with this goal, I created a transfer flow chart, and shows each transfer and indicates which fund is paying for what. I feel this was very effective in our budget workshops, and plan to continue this in the future. Goal number four was to maintain healthy ending balances. Much like our budget, at our home, we must save, set aside for unexpected revenue shortfalls. At the close of 2015, our ending balance was just over $3.1 million. Staff estimates an ending balance of 2.8 at the end of this current year, and I stress that these estimates are very conservative, but I also know that in the 2017 budget will keep a healthy balance in the end. Our last goal, we wish to accomplish this with this budget, is to increase transparency in all funds. We have added three funds that will help with transparency for the citizens. This includes the Solid Waste Fund, Stormwater Fund, and the Land Bank Fund. We'll discuss these as we review each of the funds. Now we can go on to the General Fund, and about 45% of all revenues are ad valorem or property tax revenues. These revenues are calculated based on SS valuation. The city's valuation has continued to grow as new homes and businesses are being built. Last year, Michelle stood at this podium and said, this is the largest increase I've seen in her time here, and it was 7.45%. We're very happy to report that over that year, over this past year, we've grew 7.78% over last year. So the next slide, if I can get it going, is a side-by-side comparison of our revenues from 2016 to 2017. It's important to note that because we established the Land Bank Fund, all the residential lot sales will not be going into our General Fund revenues. However, it's also important to note that at the very end, we've maintained the same level of revenues with taking out all the residential lot sales. So that means our city's grown, and we're maintaining our revenue levels even if we have to take out all revenue lots, sales. Now to the expenditure side. It's, as you know, we have land-related expenses, and about $3.1 million is allocated to that. And as the mayor mentioned at the beginning, we did save $57,000 due to our principal payments on our major land debt interest payment for this year, along with other expenses as special assessments and taxes, City Hall and pool debts. So this leaves about 55% to fund all our other departments because of the land-related expenses. And the way we did it this year, and I really appreciate all the councilmembers inside the budget workshops, we started with last year's budget, and it was a 10% cut last year. And as you can see, through our savings, through the unemployment insurance premiums and land bank, establishing a land bank fund, at the very bottom, you see, we haven't spent a dime. a dime over what we spent last year. Uh, so that's really fortunate for us, um, to have enough savings right now, um, to, uh, level spending, at least on our ba- on our department funds. As you can see, uh, we haven't spent any more money on administration, courts, parks, recreation, senior center, and pool. A slight increase for the council expenses for an officer at meetings, uh, for safety. Police department was increased due to the digital ticket program and moving the animal control inside the department. Zoning and planning, we talked about the code enforcement officer. Non-departmental increased, uh, because we had a slight increase in principal and interest payments on city hall and pool debt. Community development was increased as a result of the new home incentive programs. Due to unemployment, yeah, due, due to unemployment insurance savings and, uh, establishment land bank fund, we were able to keep total expenditure amounts at 2016 levels. And, and, and that was the base budget, and this allowed us, like the mayor said, uh, to, uh, increase some transfers into streets. Our budget in 2017 has $400,000 extra going into the street funds for street improvements. It also has $100,000 to the capital improvement, uh, fund and the equipment reserve fund, and all those transfers are controlled by the, uh, council, so you guys have, uh, leasing the capital improvement and the equipment reserve funds, so if, if we choose to stay, uh, keep them in there we can or not. And what, what, pretty much what that four, extra 400, 600,000 dollars in the street funds does for the street fund budget, as you can see, is 50% of expenditures next year will go to street improvements. If we include maintenance along with these improvements, the total equals about 70% of the street fund budget going to maintenance and street improvements. Not much has changed in the wa- uh, changed in the water fund. Bel Air still partners with the Park City and the Chisholm Creek Utility Authority, and we contract with the city of Wichita to provide water for our community. Through the charge, you can see 88% of revenues are for wa- from water sales, 77% of expenditures account for the cost of water and debt services. This leaves about 23% of all expenditures to be spent on staff, upkeep, and improvements. We do maintain a healthy ending balance of a little over 822,000 in the water fund. For the sewer fund, all Bel Air's wastewater is treated through the CCUA. Over 90% of revenues are collected via sewer charges, much like, there you go, much like the water fund, debt service and CCU payments account for 75% of expenditures. This leaves 23% for staff, upkeep, and improvements. We also have a healthy ending balance of just shy of a million dollars in the sewer Solid waste fund was created in 2016, all trash and recycling, uh, all tris- all trash and recycling, uh, revenues and expenditures will be received and paid out of this fund. It's important to note that our utility billing staff has paid out of the water fund, so an administration fee will be paid from, paid to the water fund out of the solid waste fund to help pay these salaries. And this is one more thing about transparency, we used to pay all our trash and, uh, recycling fees out of the water fund. Instead, we created our own solid waste fund, and so we can see what's going in, what's coming out, and, uh, better track those types of numbers. The stormwater fee, stormwater? Uh, stormwater fund, uh, the city renegotiated its, uh, solid waste contract and saved around $2 a customer. After the summer storms, I think we all realize the importance of, uh, rainwater drainage. Because of our solid waste fees are, are low when compared to Wichita, we elected to use these $2 in savings to help fund costs associated with water drainage improvement around the city. The stormwater fund was set up to just, do just that. All these funds are pretty small right now, and we're planning on building up some ending balances so we can really affect the, the drainage, but it's important to take this first step and, uh, create the funds, so we have dedicated funds going into the services needs. Another fund created in December of 2015 was land bank fund. Simply speaking, revenues in the land bank fund are generated by residential lot sales. These revenues will help fund special assessments in all property inside the land bank. The 2017 proposes transfer, uh, 2017 budget proposes a transfer of $200,000 from the general fund into the land bank fund in order to pay for these specials. This is in regard, this is to help the fund create an ending balance, so very soon, the land bank will be self-sustaining and simply be funded through lot, residential lot sales. Our bond and interest fund is more or less a pass-through fund, all special assessments are collected, and, uh, and, and city at large debt is paid out of this fund. Sure I'm right here? Next slide represents the total budget authority in 2017 budget. And my last slide is the timeline. We're scheduled to have a public hearing on this budget on August 9th. After we have heard from the citizens, we will make final adjustments in the council workshop. On August 16th, the city will adopt the budget, and sometime before August 20th, I will submit the budget. And I can open up for questions. The main thing is, is the depart- and the general fund department budgets will remain 2016 levels, and with the addition of $400,000 transferred into streets, and, uh, $100,000 transferred into CIP, and $100,000 transferred, transferred into the, um, equipment reserve. So i- if there's anything you take away out of that, that's what I'd want you to take away, so. Any questions?
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much for coming here, and I'll, I'll just say this, and call me a dork if you want, but I, I really liked this presentation with the pie charts and, and the little clip art, I mean, budgets are not fun. Spreadsheets are not fun, at least not for me. I just, and, and this, uh, the way it's spelled out, and again, and this is online for anybody at home, again, wants to, uh, uh, become aware of that, so, uh, just to highlight, just a few more things here real quick. Again, no mill increase, additional principal payments, more money towards streets. Um, I'm just, I can't be more excited about, uh, about this proposed budget. Again, so the action tonight, again, is simply to approve, uh, proposed budget for publication in the Ark Valley News and to set that special meeting for August 9th. Is there a motion to do so?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before we do that, I'd like to congratulate our, uh, financial manager for an excellent written presentation and an outstanding verbal presentation. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve the Bel Air 2017 budget as presented by city manager and staff for publication and scheduled, and schedule the public hearing on August 9th, 2016, at 6:30 PM.
Second.
At first and second, are there any questions or comments?
I'd like to make one comment. I think we have another award-winning budget director. Thank you very much.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? It passes, okay. Okay, next is, um, a resolution, um, for, uh, an IRB. Uh, this is for Epic Sports. Epic Sports is an internet, um, sports supply company founded in Wichita. Uh, they, that just continues to grow and grow and grow. Uh, our Sunflower Commerce Park is quite attractive to growing businesses, um, especially since we have the infrastructure there. Um, they're buying 20 acres in phase two, uh, again, phase two of our Sunflower Commerce Park, and the reason that they're doing that is to build a 180,000 square foot warehouse. That's also going to be their headquarters and, um, offices. Um, they are requesting an IRB to fund their 10, uh, um, $10 million project. This resolution allows for Epic to move forward on acquiring financing for the construction, and that's why we do that. Uh, just want to let everybody know, again, the city is not financially liable for the IRB. Uh, we're simply a conduit to achieve the tax incentives, um, so this business can come here and get going. So, if, uh, council is comfortable moving forward with this IRB for Epic Sports, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve a resolution of the governing body of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, determining the advisability of issuing taxable industrial revenue bonds for the purpose of financing the acquisition and construction of a commercial facility to be located in said city, and authorize the mayor to sign. Second.
Okay, we have first, and we have two seconds. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And this is just, again, more exciting news, more growth, more businesses, um, coming here, and we're excited about that. Okay, next is a hot topic here, we heard a little bit about it, some of our reports, we've been talking about this since April. Um, as most, I think everybody is aware, the governing bodies became aware of some utility overcharges, um, but only to certain customers. Um, like I said, this was, uh, revealed in April, uh, so we immediately took action by bringing in Alan Gibbs and Hulick, uh, to conduct the audit from 2001 to 2007. Uh, they expanded that audit to 2011, and they also reviewed all utility customers, so we branched into the residential as well. Um, so the both commercial and residential, we did this because we wanted to assure, uh, citizens that this practice stopped, stopped, and isn't happening anymore. But just because it isn't happening anymore, what do we do about the fact that it happened? And, uh, so council's had, uh, quite a bit of conversation about this. Um, nine, nine accounts were identified with these overcharges. Um, I stated, um, I think, uh, oh, two, three months ago, that I wanted a resolution by the 1st of August, uh, which is why it is on the agenda this evening. Uh, council has, uh, again, discussed this, we have, uh, letters that are in our packet to give full refunds to these nine accounts, uh, from the '03 to '07 dates, which were listed in that audit. Um, I think this is the absolute, I think this is the least we can do, uh, for these account holders, um, so, didn't know if there were any, uh, comments from council members or a motion to, uh, make it move on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the repayment of certain utility overcharges of the city of Bel Air to accounts identified in the Alan Gibbs and Hulick audit.
Second.
We have a first and second. There are no additional comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think I need to recuse myself on this.
Okay, well, let the minutes note, uh, that Councilmember Martine is recusing herself from this vote. Um, and again, these are for the letters that are in the packets, um, that will go out to these nine account holders. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? This is, you're abstaining.
I recuse myself.
Or recusing, you're abstaining, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry, you're absolutely right. Okay, so, pass three to nothing, we'll get those letters out, um, and, again, put this ugly chapter behind us, hopefully, and again, with apologies to, um, those account holders for that. Okay, next, we need to, uh, consider an ordinance authorizing the sale and disposition of certain property. Um, this is the Public Building Commission, the PBC, um, actually owns all of the land in the Sunflower Commerce Park. The land is then leased to the city for debt payments and sales. When the city approves a land sale, in this case, uh, which we just talked about to Epic Sports, the PBC must approve the sale and release, uh, and release that portion, um, from the lease. Uh, the PBC did meet tonight at 6:30, uh, to, and approve the sale and removing those 20 acres from the lease. Uh, the city agrees to remove these acres from the lease allows, which, that allows this closing to occur, so is there a motion to approve the ordinance allowing for the sale of Epic to move forward?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale and disposition of certain property under a lease between the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and the city of Bel Air, Kansas Public Building Commission, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
We have a first and second, any questions or comments? Fact that it's an ordinance has a roll call. Dr. Becker?
Aye.
Guy McDonald?
Aye.
Betty Martine?
Aye.
Diane Nguyen?
Aye.
And it passes. Next, E and F, uh, these can go together, uh, they're related, uh, we sell photo separately, but they are related to easements in the courtyards at Elk Creek. The developers needing some additional space for construction and requesting a small portion of two easements be vacated. Planning commission approved these vacations, um, just such a funny word to say, they approved the vacations, but vacancies, I'm gonna say that. They approved, make, the vacations, that's the official word here, at their July 14th meeting, and, uh, so that now comes for the city council for final approval. I see Jason Gish is here, um, my neighbor with the prettiest yard in all of Bel Air is here, oh, it is, everybody should go there, just let him know first, but his backyard is amazing. Anyway, he's from MKEC is here, uh, to explain, uh, the action and answer any questions that we might have.
So, good evening, Mayor and Council, Jason Gish, MKEC, uh, on beha- on behalf of, uh, Perfection Builders. Um, we, uh, had a lot, and you might, I don't know if you can put that back up there, and I can get through that slide. Thank you very much. Um, lot 26, basically, there's a portion that would actually, um, it's highlighting the, the easement, if you will, that's affected, but we're going to just, we're asking to vacate just a portion of the southernmost edge of that easement, and the reason for that is it allows that particular lot to hold, it would allow a 10-foot-wide garage, third car garage on that particular home. So, um, that is ideal, uh, before, it was less than that, and so this, a small vacation will handle that. And in addition, just so you know, that particular easement, uh, had an original width of 30 feet, so we're not at all, from an engineering standpoint, concerned with the reduction of that. We talked to the utility companies, uh, went over it with Mr. Price, so, um, uh, that cleans that up and would help that owner, um, be able to do the third car garage that's buying that lot. The other edge is just, we happened to notice, as we were doing this, that, hey, we had some, uh, building overhangs, um, these are zero-lot line homes, if you remember right, at the courtyards at Elk Creek, and the, the plait is rich and ridden in such a way that you can overhang the, uh, soffit and such into the neighboring adjoining property, um, which is fine, except for when there's an easement there. So what we're doing, uh, here is similar, we just, we caught that, showed it to Keith, we thought it would be good to just clean that up in the event that home would sell in the future, we wouldn't want to have a conflict. So, that's why we're here, asking for that one as well, to just vacate two foot of that easement within that reserve, and once again, uh, spoken with, uh, Westar, the utility providers, to make sure, they're fine, they're actually already in place, so that makes it easy for them to see where they're at. Um, so we would, uh, really appreciate your consideration and approval of this.
May I ask a question?
Please.
I think some people listening at home may have the same idea. Now, these are fairly new, uh, a new development, how do things like this happen, anyway? It was just a mistake that somebody made when they were laying it out?
Well, the, the, the reserve was a, a mistake, yes, that was an honest mistake, just, it, we sat it down, put it on there, and just failed to recognize it. Um, we're just here trying to fix that. Um, had we, had we caught it, what we would have done is, is, is it would have been all the way back to plating, whenever that was, a couple of years back. That's, that wasn't our, our opportunity to make it right, but we missed that, so we're, we're here to try to fix that mistake. The, the other one is simply, um, originally, the marketing for the third car, we were kind of doing some eight-foot side, size, uh, third car garages, and this just gives the opportunity to get a full-size third car garage. So that's, that's what's happening on lot 26.
Okay, thank you. I think it's really incredible that we don't see more of this, actually, with the complicated plans and plating and everything, I'm just always amazed at, uh, the patience of people that lay all that out, so.
We don't always get it right, but we try.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you for coming, sir. See you again.
Mr. Mayor? I'll move to approve an order vacating certain portions of a drainage and utility easement on property located within the corporate city limits of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign. And can I include both of these?
And can I include both of these in the same motion? Are they exactly?
No, we need to separate them.
Okay.
They're differently named, separately, because they're recorded with registered deeds.
Okay.
Second.
Did we, did we pass D on the list here? We have passed that?
Yeah, we're on E.
Okay, I saw that, but the second one is on the other side, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We're talking about-
That answers my question.
Okay. All right, yeah, talking about the vacating certain reserves of the courtyards, we do have first and second on item E, since it, again, is in, is in order, we need to do a roll call vote, and I get to vote in this, and I vote in the affirmative. Dr. Becker?
Aye.
Guy McDonald?
Aye.
Betty Martine?
Aye.
Diane Nguyen?
Aye.
And it passes. Next, item F here is related, but as in a separate notion by somebody, if you would. Somebody?
Mr. Mayor?
I'll make a motion to approve an order vacating certain portions of a drainage and utility easement on property located within the corporate city limits of the City of Bel Air, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments? Again, with the roll call, I vote aye. Dr. Becker?
Aye.
Guy McDonald?
Aye.
Betty Martine?
Aye.
Diane Nguyen?
Aye.
Next, item G, ending home marketing incentives. The city's offered marketing incentives to those purchasing new homes in Bel Air, we've done this since 2011, so we've done this for five years now. This was due to that, due to sharp decline that was occurring at that time with new home construction. However, Wichita, most of the surrounding communities began offering these incentives to fill in existing developments, as well as spur new home growth. The incentives were successful, we've had over 100 new homes come in here, so a lot of good news here, and five different developments under construction here. However, Wichita ended their program two years ago, and a lot of other community programs are set to expire this year. We discussed this at length at our last workshop, and again, that also is available online for YouTube or through our website, but we discussed this earlier this month, and I think, don't want to speak for everybody, but kind of felt that it might be time to end ours as well, that's kind of my feeling on that. So if council's ready to make a decision on these incentives?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I make a motion to approve canceling the Bel Air Home Marketing Incentives Program effective December 31st, 2016, and notify real estate companies working in Bel Air.
Second.
First and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm going to point out, again, a couple things in this motion, it goes through the end of this calendar year, we're going to let the real estate companies know, and this is a good thing, that we can not have to do incentives for that, because we, I think, moving here is, a lot of incentives to move here.
That's right.
Okay, let's see here, next, we're moving on to, to H, which is storm water utility. We've talked about this quite a bit this month, guys, and never, ever, ever, in my wildest dreams, did I think we'd be talking about 10 inches of rain in July. Anybody there ever imagine that? I mean, I just, you know, I think people in Washington State might even be questioning that, but 10 inches of rain that we had last month, storm drainage becomes a hot topic, and we found a number of improvements that need to be made, and we heard about tonight, it continues to be a hot topic. However, there's no dedicated funding source to pay for bridges, culverts, storm drains, et cetera. Due to the negotiation of a new trash and recycling agreement, we heard about this in the budget presentation, waste connections lower the cost of trash service by $2 per month. So, we discussed the idea of using that $2 savings to begin a storm water utility that would allow us to be proactive in solving these drainage issues throughout our city. Yeah, so no tax increase or anything to this, but we're not, it's a savings that we can use for this. We already have some of the lowest rates I've heard of for trash. The idea was to use that savings, like I said, to help with storm water, and in the end, residential customers are not going to see a change in the utility bill. Charter Ordinance 18 was approved on May 3rd, giving us the authority to create the Storm Water Utility Fund. This ordinance identifies that it will run like the water sewer and trash utilities. In addition, the rates will be established by resolution, which is the same way we set all of our utility rates. Council approved the resolution, allowing for a monthly fee of $2 per residential customer and $10 per cus, per commercial customer. So I wanted to see if council's ready to move forward with the Storm Water Utility Fund.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to make a motion to approve an ordinance concerning the adoption of Chapter 14, Article 3 of the Municipal Code of Bel Air, Kansas, in connection with the establishment of a storm water management system and utility, all within the City of Bel Air, Centwood County, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
We have first and second, roll call vote, Dr. Becker?
Aye.
Guy McDonald?
Aye.
Betty Martine?
Aye.
Diane Nguyen?
Aye.
Passes. Just like I said, this is more exciting, proactive news for our city, and I congratulate City Manager Ty Lasher, Dad, for, you know, working this up, and Jamie, and being involved so that we can be proactive. Again, citizens, you're not paying anymore.
Planning for the future.
Planning for the future.
Can I interject something, Mayor?
Yes.
Council has a sneak preview of an insert we're going to send out to all of the citizens, and what we've done is, because it will go into effect in August, so when the August bills come out, there's going to be, those who have waste connections through the city, their trash bill has already gone down by $2, so then they'll see a PF, no, I'm sorry, that's the, our SF for Storm Water Fun, Fee will be $2, so they're going to see an extra fee in there. Like you said earlier, it's, they're not going to realize that if you have the city trash service, because it's just going from one fee to the other, but we wanted to explain to citizens that look at their bills, that they can identify what all those fees are. So, we talk about what the Storm Water Management Fee does in here, and because we thought we were talking about utilities, we'd also kind of include talking about how trash is handled, and the code on, on your utility bills, TR for trash, we've got the recycling, and then we also, because we had some questions over the past few months about how water is, is charged to citizens, how sewer, and there's a winter average, how that's set, so if people take the time and look over this, they'll see a lot of information, not just about the storm water fee that's being implemented, but all of our utilities, how we, how we charge and things like that. So, hopefully, we tried to put some good pictures and information in there, not a lot of reading, but, but I want citizens, as they get their utility bill, to look at these, and hopefully they'll answer some of the questions they may have had or have heard in some of the comments that have been made about utilities. So, encourage people to look at the insert when they get it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I think this is excellent, I had to look at this way before I got into what we were doing first, kind of thing, I think this is absolutely excellent, and something that I hope you keep around and, and that type of thing, and, or give to everybody that's new to the, to the city. And I'm glad that recycling and waste management lowering their bill could help in that, because that kind of goes back a long ways.
And, and we did do that, Ms. Nguyen, we, we, we took this flyer insert and created a pamphlet, and so we're putting that in all of our new customers, so when they sign up, they can kind of look at that, so.
That's great.
Wonderful, thank you. Kind of moving on in here, into discussion and future issues, just a sidebar, a comment, observation that I'd like to make, now, Tuesday is trash day. And I know, just driving around, you know, when I go to work early in the morning, or, you know, the night before, come back and see, on recycling nights, how many recycling cans are full to the brim of recycling. I mean, this is, I think we really need to be proud of ourselves, the city, for what we do, and we're kind of leading the way in that. As far as future issues, again, reminding everybody, we just passed August 9th at 6:30, half an hour before regularly scheduled time, we're going to have that special meeting, public hearing for the budget hearing, so if anyone wants to make a comment, council members will be up here and available for that public hearing. Then we will have a workshop immediately following, following that special meeting, and move into our workshop agenda. I do have some appointments, like to come up on, here in the near future, two individuals like to be reappointed to the Planning Commission, that have served and served our city for a number of years, and also Stephen Crook, a new individual, moved here about three years ago from Nashville, to work in the aviation industry here, and his wife, and they live here in Central Park, and this came as a recommendation from Keith, him, just working with him on a remodeling project, and his thoroughness, and asking the right questions and everything, so. Had a number of people interested in that position, and would like to have those three on our next agenda. So, want to remind everybody with that, and before we adjourn, I would like to ask for a five-minute attorney-client executive session with the city manager and city attorney being invited in.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Could we increase that to 10 minutes, because we're always rushed? Would that be okay?
This is just a real simple one statement that needs to be made, if you guys want more, we can, but for this topic, we only need, if there's other things you guys want to talk about, you guys can say that.
Yeah, Dr. Becker might have something to talk about, Mr. Mayor, that's what I'm thinking, but I don't know, I haven't asked her.
It's up to you guys.
It's fine with me.
It's okay with me.
May I have a motion?
If you don't think we'll need any discussion whatsoever?
I don't think so on this, I mean, we can go 10, it's up to you guys. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for 10 minutes, for, into executive session for consultation with our city attorney and city manager for a period of 10 minutes, and, well, it's already there, to invite the city manager.
Second.
First and second, executive session for 10 minutes at 8:03, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. 8:03, 20. 8:03, 20.